Good evening. Today is Tuesday, March 23rd. This is the regular meeting of the Rhinebeck Central School District Board of Education. Can I have an approval, a motion to approve the minutes of the March 9th, 2021 regular meeting?
Do you want?
Second.
Any changes? All those in favor? Okay, that passes. And next we have the report of the superintendent.
Okay, so I understand, so I can be honest with Sam. We're, the majority is music in our school's home, and I'm a musician myself by trade. Actually, I was also a percussionist, never played Tippity. But the music department at the high school has communicated to all students. And I'm so pleased to have with us tonight Sam Fleming. And he's prepared a Tippity solo for NISMU. So normally Solo Fest would be an event that the students go to. They, it's an intensive event where they would get evaluated from judges. But this should due to COVID, they're going to each record and submit a video of their performance. And they're going to receive comments and score from the, digitally from the judges. And Sam has been making music for 13 years, starting when he participated in a music class for preschoolers. He's heard violin lessons in second grade and joined the school band of percussion in fourth grade. His NISMU solo that he performed tonight is called Grand Teton. It was composed by John Beck, who is inspired by the magnificent Grand Teton Mountains of Wyoming. So here is his, Sam Fleming. Thank you so much, Sam.
Thank you, Sam.
Thank you.
And also, I thank you to all the music teachers in the district, K-12. Sam, is there anything special that you'd like to tell the board about your experiences as a musician?
Uh, I've had a lot of Rhinebeck music. And I mean, from what I've heard, we have a pretty good music program, so I'm thankful for that.
Great, awesome. You did a great job. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So that was my first experience Tippity solo.
That was great.
So this was a very busy week in preparation for welcoming back increased numbers of students, starting actually yesterday, and as well as beginning live streaming for the 612 students that also started yesterday. So I do want to acknowledge and recognize all of the teachers, administrators, and particularly the technology department for their collaboration in making this shift possible. And already in the, in the past, you know, two days, we've gotten some really positive feedback about the structure that the live streaming has afforded families on those off-cohort days with having that schedule to, to log in and participate with that. And we're continuing to look for more opportunities with increasing even some more time of contact. And also even more exciting, we did welcome back our 12th grade students. So anybody who drove by, who's seen that the faculty parking, or the student parking lot had a lot of cars for the first time ever, which was nice. And you walk through the hallway to start to see more students in classrooms as well. And as I, as I have shared previously at the, at the last meeting, all of the increasing that we're doing currently is under the current guidelines that we're under still. So it's still part of our original reopening. So we're able to do all of that while maintaining the distancing that has been established. And we will need to adjust the social distancing requirements in order to have all students back for more in-person learning by the end of the school year. And as many of you are aware, the CDC did release new guidance on last Friday. And all school superintendents in the state are looking forward to revised guidance from the New York State Education Department, from the New York State Department of Health, and our local health department, all of which, you know, weigh in in terms of the particular guidance that governs, you know, how we are expected to, to operate. And any plan that we do develop, that we're continuing to develop would be, we will continue to partner with our teachers and professional staff in making that possible. Our local health department has pointed out to all school superintendents that we are currently experiencing a plateau and most recently an uptick in, in cases, particularly among the younger demographic. There is widespread support at the local level for increasing in-person time, but districts are expected to use caution, particularly when transmission rates are at an elevated level. And for some context, we are currently in what the CDC classifies as a high level of community transmission with just around a thousand cases in the past seven days. So if fully adopted, some elements of the CDC guideline will present some complications for districts who have already started using the barriers and/or any of the, the secondary schools that don't have the ability to cohort, which means establishing pockets of students that have to stay isolated from other pockets of students throughout the school day. As it relates to our process, the director of facilities and I, as well as the assistant principal, have met with the school safety specialist at BOSI's, who is working with us on reviewing and assessing our ventilation plan. So we've already started that procedure. And our director of facilities has already gone through to start to evaluate each one of the unit ventilators in every classroom. And on top of that, the health department is, has advised us on the best approaches for ventilation without circulation, because you're not trying to recirculate air. You're trying to make sure that the air is moving through. So I, I'm very confident that our air exchanges are at a, at a good level. We will have the specific rate of that. So we are getting an assessment of the actual air exchanges so that we'll be able to have that as an additional mitigating factor, mitigation factor. And also, we do have the test kits on site, so we, that order has been fulfilled. We have all of our surveillance testing test kits made available to the districts. And we'll also be able to employ surveillance testing, which is another layer. All those things are, are excellent in terms of our, of our plan of, by the fourth quarter, having our students in person, you know, for the four days of the week in the 612 level. So, you know, that is, and we're in really good shape there. The planning that we've put in place, even prior to Friday's memo, is very much in line with the sentiments there, focusing on testing and focusing on ventilation. Those are key and critical to any effort that we have. Finally, by means of, of update, we will be presenting our fourth budget presentation later in this evening. And, you know, so Tom and I will be bringing that together. And other than that, that is my update.
Questions?
Albert, that's a lot of great news and a really productive week. I really appreciate the, the update. Do you have a sense of what percentage of students of the 12th grade increased with the in-person?
So currently, all, all 12th graders that opted to are, are in. We still have just over a third, almost 40% of them who are fully remote. I do know that yesterday morning, I don't have the exact numbers, but anecdotally, I stopped by just to walk through the building. And when I went to the high school main office, Dr. Devonport indicated to me that more than a few families had called that morning saying that their children wanted to come, now that they knew that school was, was, was happening. And to be honest, for, for many of them, it's the first time they've seen each other in quite a long time, actually, in, in a, in a similar setting. So we'd had a little bit more. So I would estimate that's probably still around 35, 40% of a class, around 84, so.
Hey, Albert, could you provide an update on incorporating PE at CLS? Especially as the weather starts getting warmer and when families might see a change there?
Yeah, to be honest, I haven't really, I, I've been focusing so much on the 612. I haven't looped back in with the principal about that, but I, I will prioritize that as well. That's been, you know, one of those goal areas.
Albert, I was just wondering if you had a sense of when the ventilation report would be available? General sense?
Yeah, it's going to be, it's going to be pretty soon, but it's not an official, like, they won't do an official air audit, and here's why. That, the, the type of testing that they currently do deals with a closed system. So that means they have to have the, the doors closed. It's not really a COVID, it's just based on the operation. So what they do is they give an overview of the age of the equipment, the functionality of the equipment, and how it's intended to operate in a closed system. So then on top of that, they will put their impression of if the door is open and if a box fan is taking air outward. But they actually can only assess the, the actual integrity of the equipment, and they usually do that in a fixed setting. So I learned a little bit about balancing and, and all of that. But as part of the project, we're bringing in a lot more external air into the new addition. And we have very young equipment, which is, which is great. So the report is really going to verify the functionality of all those unit ventilators and as well as the setting, because we can open up to fully 100% for external air intake, which is their advisement. So that, that they don't take into account open windows and open doors, though, which are actually even more effective at what we're trying to accomplish. So they're going to be able to talk about function, but not, you can't get an air exchange number when you have the windows and doors open, if, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
Thank you. Could you share with us a little bit about how the teachers are going to be following up with each other or with administrators about how live streaming is going and how they can learn from each other, what's working, what's not, to, to help it be as smooth as possible?
Yeah, I know that there is a, a plan to, to follow up. It's only been the two days of it at this point. I know that we built in some additional opportunity for support. I think it's going to have to be ongoing on that. I can, I will do a little bit of digging to get more concretely of what that looks like. But, you know, like, it just, it just started. So I will see what kind of formal processing that the principals have put into place for that.
Excellent. Yeah, I wouldn't expect it to be yet. I'm just wondering if, if there's something in place moving forward.
Right. Yeah, there should be. It's just good practice to share best practices.
Thanks.
I just wanted to kind of go over again or just clarify, because a lot of people are reading the new guidance from the CDC, the process for that. So a school's C guidance from the CDC, we can't necessarily take that guidance because first, New York State Health Department has to give guidance, and then the Duchess County Health Department has to give guidance. That's actually who we have to listen to is Duchess County Health Department.
Yes, that's exactly.
And that guidance can vary from what the CDC says.
Absolutely. And the county-to-county guidance is very different. We're seeing that. In absence of any guidance that was coming from a higher source, many counties were issuing very, very different guidance. And in our county, they've been very hands-off with issuing guidance, and they've been instead looking at what districts are proposing. And that's why you're getting a lot of variability about approaches, some of which go in contradiction to the newly released guidelines. And so there is a, a lot of sorting out that has to happen on that. And that's why you're seeing such, I think it actually an increase in the variability now that this report came out, because some districts are feeling like, okay, wait, if this, because you can't pick and choose which parts of the guidance that you go with. And there are some elements of the guidance, when you look at the classification rate, that don't fare well for our region. Because the Mid Hudson region is actually currently experiencing the highest rates statewide. So it puts us into that red zone, which has different approaches. You know, the biggest focus is what we prioritized from the beginning, which was the K-5. That has been, that was a priority, and I think that's been their focus. And now extending it to K-8 would be the next. But we're really waiting for the local health department to take a little more of a stronger stance on that. Because the, the idea that it's less than six feet with barriers was a proposal by a single district in the area that got approved as of a plan, but it's not the only plan, nor is it a recommendation. It's just, they kind of let every district just try something, which they say, but do it with caution. And so then a lot of cases, you want to have legal counsel get involved if it's not from an authority. And I think that's where people have been a little bit hands-off of providing very strict guidance. And I, and I shared with the board in prior communication, there's a lot of conflicting, you know, kinds of recommendations. We're still, that's, you know, where we're, we're at. Which is why I think it's important that we have a plan, that we are following that. And we do have a weekly meeting, so I will learn more tomorrow. Every single Wednesday, all 13 superintendents are with the health department, and they go through, you know, where their position is, as well as doing a synthesis of, of the, the active cases and all of that as well.
Thank you. Next, we have an opportunity for public comment. If anyone would like to make a public comment, we have a microphone up here. Just state your name and come on up.
My name is Christine, and I have a son in ninth grade and a daughter in fifth grade. My husband and I are grateful you have started to revise the current model for our children. With this current revised model, the students are only gaining an extra 50 minutes with each teacher. These students will be meeting with each teacher twice a week. This is not enough compared to other districts. My son has spent the last seven months learning on his own, Wednesday to Friday. He's a straight A student and strives to do well. He has no schedule on these days. He sleeps in, lost some of his drive, says he doesn't care, and that school, this school year is a complete waste of time. I know some of this is our fault as parents, but I feel like if he was in school, none of this would be happening. He is teaching himself three days a week, and I feel this is not fair for any high schooler. This pandemic will affect their mental health for years to come. While I am painfully aware that there are only approximately three months left of the school, now it's time to give these kids some normalcy, structure, and some time in the building with their peers. I ask you and the board to reconsider the current model. I know you and the board are closely working with other superintendents in the area. Many schools have released their plan with four or five full days of instruction. If they are using Wednesday as remote days for kids, they are live streaming on that day. Why is it impossible for Rhinebeck not to do, to provide this? I know this is a tough situation. How is this model beneficial to 75% of your student population who wants and needs to be in school? I hope you and the board will reconsider changing the half-days.
Thank you. Anyone else have public comment?
Hello, my name is Liliana Varillas. I'm a pediatrician in Albany Medical Center, and I have my daughter in fifth grade here in CLS. I felt that I wanted to give my opinion and second what Mrs. Cosma had just said. As a pediatrician, I feel that the mental health crisis we are observing in our children is worrisome. I think that it's been seen over and over that the schools are not the center of, you know, it's not where patients are getting infected. I think it's happening at home, it's happening by the practices of, of, of everyone, right? You know, going out or whatever. It's not happening in school. I think schools have shown to be quite safe. I think you guys have done a wonderful work in keeping things very safe. You know, CLS has been doing well, but I do, I do agree that the students need more in-person teaching. Where they are losing academically and what they're losing in mental health is, I, I, I think we're not going to be able to recover unless we strive to move faster on this. I, I think it's doable, I think it's safe. If everybody is wearing their masks, if we keep distances, if we do ventilation, as you're suggesting, if we're more creative, we have the space, we are lucky to live in a beautiful open area like Rhinebeck, I think we could do it. And I just thought I wanted to give my opinion. I am not only a pediatrician, I, I am a pediatric rheumatologist. So I see the children that have the complications post-COVID. And I know it's, it's worrisome, but it's a very small amount of patients. They're all doing well. Kids are not the problem. You know, I think the main problem is not having them receive the education that they need. And the mental health crisis that is going to come after this is going to be, it's really worrisome for us. Thank you.
Anyone else like to make public comment? Thank you. We'll move on now to our reports and discussion. And our first report is from the Rhinebeck Science Foundation, Andrew Shilken. Welcome.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for the invitation, Albert, Diane, everybody. It's really nice to see you. It's really nice to be anywhere but inside my house. Thank you also to all of you for all the hard work you've done under really trying conditions for a really, a much longer period of time than I think any of us ever would have expected. Just want you to know that your, your work is greatly appreciated in, in the community. RSF news from the last year. I think the big piece of news is, of course, the, the grant for the laptops that helped support district-wide remote learning, K through 12. It is the largest grant that RSF has ever supported. And I'd say, given the way the last year has played out, probably the most important program that, that we've ever supported. So we're happy to have done that. It, of course, is just the most recent in a long line of grants that we've done since 2008, which we started with, our first grant was for stereo microscopes, a couple of stereo microscopes in one classroom, growing to that. Along the way, we have supported echo initiatives, Lego robotics, equipment and professional development, science fairs and body art, Books Journey, Parts of the Madagascar Day, Discovery Festival, Project Lead the Way, Gateway to Technology, and Technology Labs in all three districts. Those are just the highlights from my personal perspective. There are lots more. And I hope that for those folks who may be newer to the district and don't realize that those things haven't always been here, that they've been here in large part because of the support of the community and RSF's ability to kind of direct that a little bit. This past year, COVID has made things a little quieter than, than normal. We are getting back to normal. We've got a Chalk-a-thon coming up shortly. We're really excited about that, in part because we're partnering with the PTSO, which is really great. We also have a day on the calendar in October, October 23rd, I think. It's kind of great to be looking that far forward, for Discovery Festival, which we do every two years. And we are really excited about the prospect of being able to do that indoors, as we have in the past. If not, though, we're, we're making plans, we're doing it in a, in a different way. So we're really optimistic that that is, is going to happen. There are some challenges facing us as an organization. Two of them are, come to mind. One is succession and recruitment. A lot of us on the board are beginning to age out. My youngest is a senior now. So once she's gone, I think there might be other things that I look to do. And I think that's true of a number of, of our board members. And COVID has had an impact on our ability to recruit people. We're not in line, you know, at pickup for CLS. We're not on the sidelines at soccer games. So it would be really great if anyone who is interested and anyone who can spread the word would do so. We really do need that next generation of CLS families, of new families, to, to join us and help keep Rhinebeck Science Foundation going for the next generation. The other challenge for us in the coming year is, not surprisingly, fundraising. We had to cancel our gala, the one big fundraiser we do every year. Last year, we've had to cancel it this spring as well, and that puts a very sizable dent in our fundraising efforts. We've already started rethinking fundraising, and we've got small, smaller events already underway. I hope some of you enjoyed the chocolate and wine tasting that we did for Valentine's Day. We have some other small events that we're looking to try and make up some of that ground. But again, anyone with that kind of expertise, we'd love to, to see them. We're excited to continue to evolve as the school district evolves and help support the really great education that you all are, are making possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for being here. And the Science Foundation has been a great partner to the school and the, the, all the things that you mentioned, and certainly this year with the laptops. I don't know where the district would be if all the kids didn't have a device. So thank you for all the work you do. Thank you for coming and sharing that with us.
Great, thank you.
I just, I'll just add also that I am very grateful for the partnership. I think having regular time together to talk about vision is very exciting. I think that there's a lot of, of potential for some really creative partnership. And I'm also very happy to see you working with the PTSO on things as well. I think as the more that we can continue to connect, and, and, you know, your organization is the, is really the, the largest of them. And I, I just want to thank you for, for being that connection, that connection across. I think there's a lot of, of promising future ahead in the partnership. So we're very grateful for that.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to move on to budget development, presentation number four.
Okay, so this, this presentation that we have, it has been printed. And it's also going to be posted on the district website as well as all the other budget presentations as well. I'm going to move forward just so we can all see each other. So as we have expressed, we are trying to be, to have vision around our planning. We, we want to very much create a financial plan that is sensitive to the unique learning needs as a result of the pandemic. So now those were established prior to the federal government releasing the American Recovery Plan, which is the federal stimulus that we'll be talking about related to pandemic learning loss and mental health. So we'll talk a little bit more about that as well. But that has been one of our, our touchstones in terms of the creation of the overall financial planning. And we do want to create opportunities for supporting enriched curriculum and shifts in curriculum, that there's an ongoing need for professional development and just adjusting the trends in contemporary education, expanding opportunities in growth. Emphasizing access is a, is a major driver in all of our decision-making. So for as much as we have financial plans, we also have to have vision attached to it. And that's the, that we've been doing as well as maintaining our facilities. So as you can see, the next slide just talks about the schedule. So here we are, we're reviewing it. At the last meeting, we presented the full budget documents. And so then we're coming back today with some adjustments based on the discussion that we had from that initial proposal. So the board can see that this initially, the second proposal here is showing a reduction from the last of just approximately 200,000 from our prior presentation. And the current proposed budget is now, from, from a budget-to-budget increase from last year to this year, is, is below last year's budget by 0.32% from, from last year. And so, I mean, we can talk stuff there. That's where the, the general, where we're, we're coming in. You can see in the future slides of where we're making those adjustments as well.
Do you want to think more about that, Tom? It's pretty much.
Yeah, so there, there was four areas in which we reduced it. The DEHIC health insurance came in at 0%, so no increase. So we dropped it from the 2% that was in the initial budget to zero. Saved $120,000. Reduction in the guidance position at CLS from a 1.0 to a 0.6, so a reduction of 0.4. The teacher aides, that was a retirement that was accepted at the last meeting. And based on, you know, the question that came up with grade seven, eight, why is it so much higher? I went back and looked at it and I did see where I made a mistake. I had somebody in there for an additional 0.4. So I took that out of there. So that's how we got down 202,600, which brought us into a negative budget-to-budget.
Tom, just a question. On the teacher aides, are we not replacing that or is this just the breakage?
That's the breakage.
Okay.
So I thought that the next two slides would be very helpful for the board to see and for the community to see, the historical, the budget comparisons. So the first chart that we're going to be sharing, it shows the budget-to-budget increase from year to year. So you'll see from last year to this year, it's actually a reduction of, of 116,000. So again, as I said, about a third of a, of a percent. And you can see in the years prior to that, it typically hovered around the 3% from budget-to-budget. And then on the next, we also show the tax levy. You can see that this is also being presented, the proposed budget is coming in at the lowest tax levy in the past five years from a percentage standpoint as well. So I thought that was good historical data to have synthesized in an easy-to-digest way. So we just pulled that data together to present it to the board and to the community as well. That's been a good stopping point if there's any, we're looking to start maybe a discussion around there. The second part of our presentation is going to deal with the federal stimulus, which is not a part of our financial planning process. It's going to be related to our planning and our vision and our strategic moves forward, but it is not conflated with our current budget plan for the proposal for next school year.
So thinking as a, a community member looking at this, a natural question would come to mind, which is if the budget has gone down a third of a percent, can you explain why the tax levy would still be going up?
Yes, I can explain that.
Thank you.
Let me get my book out here. And it really gets into the revenue side of things. So on the revenue side of things, there were a few, more than a few decreases this year to get in line. We had to reduce our interest rate. Our overall state aid went down, not just because of the building aid. This was our overall aid did go down a little bit. It did because of our wealth factor. So we're not receiving as much as in state aid as we had in previous years. We also made some other changes such as, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, as to our tuition from students. That was also decreased, so we wanted to make it more accurate. So all those little pieces in the revenue really are getting taken out of revenue and put into the taxes. And we're able to fit it under the tax cap this year, which was, a lot of things came together this year, which made it really optimal. And that's the reason why you're seeing a negative budget-to-budget while you're still seeing a positive tax increase. So it's really the loss of revenues in a lot of different areas.
Thank you.
So that gets us in balance for going forward in, in the next years. If we had kept everything the same or reduced the taxes, then we'd have a real issue in the next couple of years because we are not meeting the interest at all. It's not even close to what we had projected for this year. So, you know, we have to be realistic. So, you know, taking some of those revenues out of the mix will help us in the next budget cycle because we're starting from a lower place. And so as the interest increases again, I hope, then we'll be able to add more back to the program because we'll be receiving more revenues. Does that explain it or do you?
It does, I think so. And also thinking as a community member reading the news, you mentioned this was developed before the, the federal aid package was approved. Will you be talking about how that impacts us?
Yes, yes, we will.
Thank you.
In the next part of the program, we will. Now, we're slated to approve the budget at the next meeting, okay? That's where we are proving the bottom line, on April 13th. We cannot do it at the meeting after that, which is the 27th. No, did I get that right? Yeah, the 27th. That's going to be past the deadline. So we either have to, we have to make the final decision at our next board meeting on the 13th for that dollar amount. As you know, the numbers in between those dollar amounts can change. We're not locked into those things. We're just locked into the grand total. We're not locked into, well, you said there was a position here or you said you were going to do this here. It's, it's just a plan. We have the ability to move those things afterwards as we see fit. So what we'd be looking to do, and this for new board members too, is we're, we're not approving a tax levy. We're not approving any of that stuff. We're just approving the bottom line, 36 million. I don't remember the number in front of me, 36 million, whatever that number is. That's the number that goes onto the ballot. So we would have one more opportunity, but that would mean creating a, a, if the board did not approve of the budget at our next meeting on the 13th, we would have to between the 13th and I believe it's something like the 22nd or so. We would have to have a special meeting just to set the, or set the budget amount, not the tax.
But Tom, as of today, though, we have, all the numbers are set except state aid is not the final number, right?
Right, we don't know how that may play out. Are we going to see something on April 1st? I don't know. I think this is kind of thrown at them. And one of the big things with this, the American Recovery Plan is the following. The state can't do what they did the last time. Take the money away and then give it back to US federal monies. They cannot do that. That is absolutely not allowed. So the question is, is the state going to add anything from their own coffers to our state aid? Which I heard, foundation aid, okay, that would be great. But we also heard possibly that some of the categorical aids will get a big boost, not a big boost, but a boost. So it'd be interesting to see how that all plays out.
And then, Tom, if we wanted to reduce the tax levy for the taxpayers, what, could you just kind of walk through the possible scenarios there?
No, say that again, I didn't quite.
If we wanted to reduce the tax levy for taxpayers, what are the, what are the scenarios for that?
Well, there's, there's a couple of different ways. And they don't even have to be done here and now. They could actually be done when we adopt the tax levy. And one of the biggest tools that some school districts use is the appropriated fund balance, using your fund balance to reduce the amount of your tax levy. But you got to remember, whatever how much we reduce, that's the point you start from the next year. You can't say, well, in the budget we said this, but yet we gave them a, you know, we cut $200,000. We, no, your tax levy is out by 200,000, so that's the point you start. So, you know, you, you go back too far, you're going to have a tough time moving forward because there's a lot of, of, of cliffs in front of us that we just don't know what's going to happen. As far as funding from the state, the, this money that's giving, proposed to be provided to us, that will be gone in a matter of two, two and a half years. That money has to be spent. So, you know, programs you may pick up during that time and is paid for by the federals, what happens to be say, hey, we like that program, we might have to continue. So now we got to bring it into our fold as a district. And of course, that would go against our revenues and everything, so.
And is the current budget as it is now, that's not, is that, is that using any fund balance? I mean, we've been, last several years.
That's using 750.
Already is.
Yes, yes. No, wait, it's 850, sorry, it's at 850, 850.
And we left the calculations of the levy limit, which is at the 2.93. That's still, that calculation is also in this packet as well. So the maximum allowable limit is 2.93. Then we're coming in at the proposal now at 2.37.
Right. If you wanted to put it lower than that, we would have to take more from fund balance.
Well, there's two ways of doing it, reducing the overall budget or finding another revenue or using fund balance. I would say about $100,000 worth of fund balance equals about a third of a percent. About a third of a percent. So, you know, so if we reduce it and let's went from 850 to 950, that would reduce it by about a, you know, a third of a percent, it would come down to about two, into the low twos.
And I'm happy to see this lower than it was last year. I think this has been obviously a tough financial year for people. I guess I'd like to consider lowering it even more. I'm not set one way or the other, but, you know, I certainly don't want to set us up next year for any issues. Do you, as far, I mean, I know that we always ask you this. As far as what this means to taxpayer, the difference between the 2.37 or the 2.93, like an average taxpayer, do you have a sense of what that would look like?
Let me see if I remember correctly, because we worked up individual ones this morning. Just a jumble of numbers. If I remember moving it down from a 2.93 to 2.37 on a homeowner, that was a savings of about 20, 25 dollars.
That's like a median homeowner, which is like 300 and house worth 325, something like that?
Yeah, there's new medians now and new averages based on the new assessments. You know, it went from 295 now to about 335.
And I know that's not everybody, each town is a little different, all that funky math that happens to, to actually get your tax.
Yeah, we actually have, once we get to a, a place where we know generally like where, that we're in the right number, we, we've already created a template to provide more education about what it means. So instead of just presenting just a median number, also doing it at increments of, I think we chose.
250, 400, 550.
So we have, we're presenting an array of what the actual impact is that has the tax factor. So that is more from an education point of view, once we get, arrive at what, where we're at, in terms of the overall percentage. So I think we, we want to get a sense of, of where we're at, how we're doing with this revisions. And I think we're just looking for signals because we're fully prepared to continue to educate and provide, like what does it all mean? And we're trying to do that through a little bit more graphic representation of the data to make it easily communicated as well.
Yes, Steve.
Hi, Steve.
I agree with Diane that we should look at, at some of these other revenue streams and, and being able to do something with the levy. But I would caution, this happened once before, right before the tax cap went into effect, we started spending down our fund balance and that ended up hurting us. So with New York in kind of a precarious state with respect to their revenues, I'd be a little cautious about doing that again.
I did not understand a word of that. I don't know if you did, I get this reverberation over here and it's just driving me nuts.
He cautioned us about, about doing, this happened just before the tax cap, so he cautioned us.
Oh, yeah, oh, definitely. We, we really imposed our own tax cap and it, it hurt us. It hurt us, definitely did. Put us in a bad place to start the tax cap season, yeah.
I guess I'll just add sort of somewhere between, I, I'm torn between, you know, recognizing what a difficult year this has been. And it's not going to just magically get better next year, you know, necessarily for most people. So I want to do what we can to keep in mind the taxpayer burdens. But I also recognize, as Steve brought up, that looking ahead, it doesn't look like New York State's budget is in great shape in the long run. And so I anticipate, you know, we'll be struggling to get money there moving forward. And so we don't want to shoot ourselves in the foot as we did some years ago by self-imposing, as you said, the tax cap before it came down on high. So I'm just torn.
Yeah, I will say also, another factor is we're now approaching that level where we'll be receiving the state minimums as it relates to aid as well because of the overall rise in the assessed values. So that is also another factor that we already know to be, to be, that we are going to be approaching the, so as the state aid already becomes a concern, we're, we're really at the bare minimum of.
It's not going to get better.
Right.
It's not going to get better for the district.
So that is, you know, in the spirit of the planning, you know, we, we were like, I think unanimously all, looking to make sure that we come in, you know, under, under the cap. So we really try to take a critical lens at looking through that. And, you know, we do have a temporary boost or shot in the arm, so to speak, from this federal stimulus that we'll talk about as well. But it's very important that, that does not factor into our, our operational budget plan because that will be a significant financial cliff because that is not, it's not even planned to be a forever type of, so we cannot replace programs that we would normally use for normal operations with it. So that's, you know, been, been the challenge. There, you know, there is maybe one example of an element that's included in the regular budget that we put in there because we thought it was the right thing to do, which has to do with the, the ramp up, the readiness over the summer. But, you know, that is something that is. do with the ramp up readiness over the summer, but, you know, that is something that is really a good practice that a lot of districts do use as a normal practice. But, so, you know, we, you know, we were trying to, we, I hear where you're coming from, we tried to present the plan that way.
Tom, is it possible that you could give a recommendation to the board? If we wanted to go below the 2.37, what you would think would be, without hurting too much, you know, like walking that line, could you possibly give us a recommendation? And so, if you kind of...
Yeah, I can show you what the effect would be. You know what it is, now, how it really plays out down the road is to see, but I can at least tell you, you know, what that fund exactly would be if we reduce it from 2.37 to, let's say, two. So, what does that mean? What am I not collecting, and then multiply it out by how many more years, and that's just funding you won't have over the next 10 years.
Right, and just, you know, your recommendation, obviously, your experience.
Yeah, and I could definitely put some various scenarios together.
Thank you.
And remember about this, once again, we are approving the budget amount. As far as what the taxes end up being, that can be done all the way until we adopt them in August. You know, if you want to add more fund balance, that can happen in August. It does not have to happen now. The offset is, and I remember being told this, you know, you don't get the, if you don't do it now, you don't get the budget impact of the yes vote, because you don't like it known until August, after the board's, you know, budget's already approved. So, that goodwill that you put up there is kind of lost in the shuffle, because when you go out to vote next year, everybody's going to forget that you reduced everybody's taxes by $200,000.
Right, but I think it's important when people are voting that they have a pretty good understanding of what they're voting on, what that number means for them, so...
I agree with you 100%.
No, we're, we're very much, I think we're very excited about the education process this year of how we're going to be communicating everything. I think we've got a good, a good handle on all of that. We're just looking to be further down the road at knowing that we're in the right zone so that we can, we, because we don't, we want to make sure that we're on schedule with this. So, to whatever extent we can get some clarity around the general direction, or if we're closer to the mark, or where we're at, I think that would be helpful. Is that correct, Tom?
Yep, certainly would.
So, you want to know if we're happy with the 2.37, or if we want to go up to the 2.93, or something else?
We just don't have a lot of more time.
Right, right. I just want to be very, know what everybody needs to kind of weigh in on. Mark.
So, I just like to add that, you know, I think it's great that we're, we have a budget to budget decrease this year. I'd be a little bit concerned about, you know, how much we want to, how much fund balance we want to add in to reduce the tax levy even more, just because of past experience. But, you know, if we could get a few numbers about what, some scenarios, like, if we add a little more, what the difference is going to be. And I think those homeowner figures would help, too.
Yep, they have.
Again? So, I may be misunderstanding this, but I'm asking for clarification. It looks like we're coming in at 116.5 down, which creates our 2.32 reduction. And then we have, we're taking 850 this year from the appropriated fund balance, is that correct?
Correct.
And how much is in that balance?
Say that again.
How much do we have there?
What's the total?
What is the total?
Our overall fund balance is like 5 million, but a lot of that's tied up in various reserves and anything, but our unappropriated is doing quite well. I'm sure we have well over $2 million at the end of this year.
So, when we anticipate 2022, 2023, if we found ourselves in rougher shape, for example, we have plenty in there to draw from?
There's, there's some there, and that's what I want to play into it, too. How does it affect our fund balance in future years?
Yeah.
Yep, it's a multiple years type of scenario. Yep.
And how exactly did we get into trouble? Could you just refresh my memory and for the public when we got into the trouble with the appropriated fund balance before?
Well, that was, that was an issue of two big factors that occurred. Over the summer, we had a number of children and, and the students with disabilities that were in out-of-district placements well beyond what we budgeted for. We knew of four kids coming in, but we had 10 kids coming all together, so there were six kids that came in that we had no idea where they came from. So, it was that, plus the transportation, plus we had about 12 staff members who went on a leave of absence, so we ended up paying about 12 teachers and 12 substitutes at the same time. So, that really put a crimp in that, just the one year, but it was, we went like it did of about a million dollar loss that year.
Mm-hmm.
But we had changed our budgeting right before then to budget closer to actual, right?
Yeah, that's true, too. That was, that was true, but, but it was the unexpected, two very big unexpected things. And we expect some, some of our staff to be on leave, and we're paying two people at the same time. We expect some of that. I do build that into the budget, just not 12 of them at one time, or 12 during the year, plus six out of districts, plus transportation is very expensive.
Thank you.
Way in on the, we're talking about? All right, so for timing, so next, at our next meeting, we have, we have to adopt, that's the, is that, that's the last opportunity to adopt?
Well, that's the last scheduled board meeting.
Without adding a special meeting?
Correct.
Is it possible to talk over the new scenarios you're going to send us and adopt it in the same night?
Certainly, yeah. We can easily change the numbers in that resolution based on where the, where the board feels it should be. Now, here's the thing, now, changing, changing what we're doing about appropriated fund balance and the taxes, that has no bearing on that number. It's, if you want it to go lower, and we need to go back to the document and start cutting things out of it. That's, that's when we got to go, okay, now I got to do some calculations.
And I don't think I'm hearing, no, no one has an issue with the actual budget number or the issue with anything in the budget. I don't think anybody's brought up any issues like that. The question is, how much is the tax levy going to be, I think?
That's what I'm hearing.
Is that right?
I couldn't hear. It's very hard to hear. There's some super hard to hear.
There's no actual issue with the budget number, the dollar number, right? No one's questioning things that are in the budget, or things that should be taken out or put in. The issue is, how much the tax levy is going to look like and where that money will come from, right?
That's correct. Yes.
So, I will say that, in my recommendation, and I just want to make sure the board is okay with this, my recommendation to Tom would also be to play this out for the implications, because we can't only look from one to the next, because it does have a, an implication, like, over time. So, we're all, that's what I'm going to ask, so we'll have a little bit of picture of that.
So, it shouldn't be, we can discuss it at the next meeting, but the dollar amount looks fine.
So, then we'll come back with some potential proposals for dealing with the levy in particular.
I'm trying to think of when our next planning meeting is, because is, is that the Thursday before we meet again? I'm trying to think, was that about the 5th or something like that? I can't remember when our next strategic planning committee meeting is, I was looking for the notes and things. Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So...
Strategic planning is April 8th, is that what you're asking?
That's perfect.
Okay, so that, so we can meet as a committee on the 8th to discuss these type of things, and then we can present to the board.
That's perfect, actually.
Good, okay.
Thank you. So, the next segment of this, and related to it, is the American Rescue Plan. I keep saying recovery. It's actually the American Rescue Plan, which is a federal, proposed, was a federal plan for, for addressing many needs, in particular to schools. There will be a distribution to states, which is based on the Title I calculations, and then similarly to the districts, it's going to be proportional distribution to the districts based on, on Title I. So, that is a factor. So, it deals with our profile, and that's how they calculate what each district will, will receive. And we do have a projected amount or a reported amount. The amount that you see as published, that does include our, all services within our LEA, which would also include, in our case, ASTR as well. So, ASTR services, they're part of our Title I. So, when we do the application for Title I funding, we actually support ASTR as well. So, it's proportional. The, due to the nature of the American Rescue Plan, there will be a portion of that that is certainly reserved for ASTR, because it does target subgroups of the population more proportionately than others, because it is, it is looking to mitigate some of the additional risk factors for individuals or subgroups in terms of rescue. So, there is a formula that they would be using as well.
Albert, is that the, this is the number that's been in the local papers?
This is the number that's been in the district paper.
It's like a million, four?
Which is about a 1.4 million.
1.499 million, or $1,000 short of 1.5.
But that's spread over three years?
Up until September 30th of 2023, so it goes through purchasing cycles, but it is expected to expire in September 2023.
Does that mean you get a certain amount every year, or that's how long you have to usually...
We don't know the specifics of it yet. They haven't come down with them, but it is three budget cycles, but that last budget cycle's only three months. So, it would give us, it would help us during the summer, but that's about it.
So, we wanted to provide a little education to the board about what is, what is allowed and what's not allowed, what's recommended. There is some flexibility, but this is meant to address significant interrupted instruction, so learning loss, the gaps in learning, to provide mental health supports, physical reopening, air quality, ventilation for school buildings, and then educational technology. So, we will have some flexibility, and we will have to create a plan for how to use these funds, but these are not things that will, can exist in perpetuity. They're for more single procurement of elements or programs that may be used to address some needs. So, you know, we could look at extending after-school learning supports, we could look at integrating additional academic support for students over the next couple of academic years, that would be appropriate uses of this fund. And then, if you see the next page where it says set aside, so 20, at least 20%, it could be more. In fact, we could use 100% if we chose to, through, to address learning recovery through either summer learning, summer enrichment, extended day, extended school year programs, after-school programs. So, they're, you know, they're really being thoughtful about how these funds are being used, and there are criteria that we will have to do that, which is actually exciting, that this is not having an impact on our normal plan, and it's very specific that it cannot and must not do that. And Tom will talk a little bit about the concept of supplement and not supplant. And you can see, I put in a separate pull-out quote, that it has to respond to the academic, social, and emotional needs, and the disproportionate impact of the coronavirus on student subgroups. That's an important caveat, because it does look at a homeless student differently than a student who's not homeless, and the recovery, the rescue funding supports will be allocated appropriately, which is why, you know, we are going to be looking to support also ASTR, because they're part of our overall district, in terms of what our funding, what the federal funds support. So, the next concept is an important one. It's the supplement, not supplant, and Tom's going to talk a little bit about that. It's an important concept that we have.
Yeah, this concept has been around for about 50 years now, and what was happening in the beginning, school districts would get the money, and they would just reduce everybody's taxes by the amount of money they got. They didn't increase programs or anything like that. They just really said, "Okay, we'll just substitute this in, and, you know, we can reduce our taxes." And that, that's not, the federal government said, "You can't do that." So, so, supplement, not supplant, so it's really to make sure that your federal funds benefit the intended population, and it's also subgroups, okay? This is meant for the subgroups. This is not for the overall running of the school district. This is to get really focused attention on these subgroups to ensure that they, they get the, the assistance that they need to, to get themselves, you know, moving forward and to, to raise them up. So, one of the things we just got to remember, though, as we go through this, we can't be substituting and say, "Oh, we'll just use this money here, and we'll take it out of the general fund, and we'll, we'll do that." A lot of school districts used to do that in the past, that's totally forbidden, and now they're going through these real calculations now. And thank goodness, that was a, that was a director curriculum thing.
Right. So, what this actually entails is, there has to be a documented plan with, with actual minutes. This is not something the school district can just, just do. There, this has to supplement our current offerings. It's not meant to fill in a gap or to cover things that we would normally be doing. It is intended to be purposeful and thoughtful, and there's, there's really a lot of opportunity that we can do some very good things for all of our students. We just have to be mindful of, of our usage of it, and it can't just be like a fill-in-the-gap. So, that's just a good concept for us all to be aware of, and from an education standpoint, if somebody sees that in the paper, they think, "Oh, why would we need to do any of this? Wouldn't this just go to the budget?" And this is why it can't. It has to be almost planned for and allocated separately for how we use it.
I think this is a really good opportunity. I mean, I think, you know, there's, there's a lot that our students have lost, and it's an opportunity to give some back to them. But, so, if we were to talk about mental health, if we felt that there was a great need, we could hire a mental health professional for a short period of time to address those needs, if we felt something like that would fall, could fall into this plan. Like, it can't be forever, because that's, this isn't going to be part of a budget forever, but it could be a temporary fix, or a trauma specialist, or someone that could come in, something like that could be part of this plan.
Right. And then, when the program ends, it becomes a matter of, do we think it's important enough to include it in our budget, because we feel as though that's great, and it's a matter of a trade-off? Do we raise taxes to do that, or do we look to cut other programs?
But it's something we could do if we felt like in the short term that was, that was needed.
Yeah, but, short-term, that's a, that's a perfect, a perfect example of what they're looking for.
I think that's a good opportunity to address, you know, to try to, to help what's happened.
You know, a lot of school districts are looking at, at, you know, summer programs, or looking at extending the, the day, not requiring, like, adding another period, but at, you know, really bolstering the after-school program, offering additional transportation, for example. That's something that the district here used to do, but like, having a bus that would allow equal access to after-school programming for students who need transportation to stay after, for either enrichment or for just academic support, and then transporting them home. You know, things like that are sort of, you don't always think about as the first instinct inside a big glitzy program, but it allows access to what we offer. Because it's one thing to just pay for additional time with a teacher, but it's another thing to support the student's ability to engage in them freely.
And I think it's important to kind of assess first, what do we think we need to fit here? Like, what learning gaps do we have? What, what emotional needs first?
So, would the district come up with proposed uses for the money? Would they, would it work with the board, or with the committee of the board? I know you said it would have to be minuteed, I think, correct, Albert?
Yeah, so, you know, typically, with other federal programs, the CDEP committee would, would meet as a general committee. I think in this, there would be building specific, so I think, you know, there would definitely be committee work around creating a vision and a plan for that. But I do think it's an appropriate, it's an appropriate aspect of the CDEP as well, which is, has all of the stakeholder groups as a part of it.
Diane?
Oh, I'm sorry.
And any money we've spent so far, I mean, we, you know, for example, from the Science Foundation, we spent money on technology for computers for one-on-one. What is the relation of the, the Recovery Act money or to anything that we've spent so far?
This is going to be probably from July 1st going forward. This is not a look back. This is not a look back. We do have funds this year that we've applied for, for our gear and, I can't remember.
CARES, because that's also the CARES Act.
So that, that we're applying through this time, that's about 200, a little over $200,000 that is going to help offset our cost, the school district's cost, not RSF. And I have to make sure that those monies don't get intermingled with what we plan to do and what we did.
There is a specific technology, though. There are elements of this that are tied to the digital equity. So ensuring that we have, you know, equitable access to devices, that's also a part of this as well.
Yep.
Anybody else have any other budget questions or anything else on the rescue plan? Thank you. We're going to move on to board committee reports. The first one is governance. Those are mine. Everyone has them at their desk. And you can see the decisions that were made and the discussions. There is nothing that the committee's looking for input for, but if anyone has anything they'd like to ask or discuss further, now would be the time.
Couldn't hear any of that. Sorry.
Oh, sorry. Basically, I'm not going to read them, but if you have any other further questions for the committee, governance committee.
Wow, I still couldn't hear any of that. That's amazing. Um, I mean, I heard noise, but I couldn't make out the words. I'm so sorry. Can you say it again?
If you have any questions for the governance committee.
The microphones are so hot that we're getting, we're getting ambient noise as well as direct, and it's all mashing together. Whitney, is there a way to just turn the master volume down a little bit?
That might help.
Maybe that would help us, yeah. Is that a little bit? Yeah.
Okay, so to repeat, so the governance committee meetings, there's nothing that the board is looking, the committee is looking for input from, but if anyone has any questions or anything they want to discuss regarding them, now's the time. Did you hear me?
Yes, I could hear you. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody? Okay, so then we'll move on to stakeholder relations. Those are mine.
So we do have some topics that the stakeholder relations committee brought up. Our first was, we were looking for input on interactions within the school with the administrators and the teachers. So we're looking to go into the classrooms and do tours. We want to get everyone's feedback back about that. We're also looking to add a board communication report. We feel that perhaps if board members receiving any sort of comments from people, from the public or the community, we can bring them to the board and just sort of present them anonymously so that they're recorded and the person who received the comment has an outlet. So that was our first, that's the first decision that we're looking for some input on. The second one was, we were hoping that the board would attend the April Town Hall to over, to have an overview of the budget. Albert and Tom will present the budget, but we'll all be there and be present on Zoom to support the community. We're also looking for approval to invite students. We're looking for a student representative to share their experiences and achievement with the board. It could be one, it could be several students, and then inviting various clubs and sports to talk. So those are the issues that the stakeholders would like some input from the committee, from the board.
I think they all sound like good ideas. I like the, the first one, the idea of having a communication report to organize the comments we receive, either informally or somewhat formally, but outside of meetings. I think that makes a lot of sense. And I think it makes a lot of sense for as many of us as we can to attend the April Town Hall, to be there for support. And I'm really enjoying the student involvement, you know, seeing student artwork. And kudos, I, I'm so impressed with Sam Fleming bravely coming out and, and playing the drums tonight. That was great. And I look forward, I, I always just really enjoy hearing directly from the students. So that would be great.
Steve? I'll take the other side of, of the first one, I guess. I mean, I agree of getting into the classroom and being involved there more, but I'm a little concerned about anonymous reporting. I think there's a process in place of complaints and how they should be perceived and followed through on. I think just running to the board anonymously and having something right into the minutes sets a bad example. I think it's our job to kind of provide the process, right? You have to go talk to this person, call to that person. Because if somebody came to you and said, I don't like so-and-so's homework policy, we really can't discuss that because it's a person issue.
And that was something that we did talk about. It could be specific to an individual.
Yeah, again, I think there's a process in place. The same thing with the teachers. If they ran to Albert or the board every single time instead of going through their steps, I just think it sets a bad example or a bad process. It really puts us in a horrible spot, to be honest. I think our job is, once that has been exhausted and it's still an issue, then I think the board should get involved.
I, I think that's a really good point, Steve. And I think that that was kind of in the spirit, actually, of what we were talking about, that the first line is to really reinforce the procedures that are in place. So certainly, this wouldn't be about going above the chain of command, but more about each of us as board members just sort of staying in communication with one another about the different communications that we had gotten between meetings or between the times that we had seen one another, so that we could just kind of all know what was coming down the pike or be in communication with one another about what had come down the pike.
I will, I will just offer out, I think this is a very good example of, of an opportunity for the, a board retreat topic of how, because I think that it's coming from the place of like, what do we do when somebody approaches us? Because we want to feel that as a board member, we're representing, that we're, that people are being heard. And I think that there is an obligation to, as to Steve's point, to make sure that we're following the protocols, the communication protocols. You know, I know, every school board operates somewhat differently, but I think it's a good, maybe, this is a very good topic to put out as a norm-setting activity for, like, board development, like, how do we? I know some districts have, board, board members give reports on a monthly basis or on a weekly basis, or however you want to do that, where they say, you know, I had this interaction and it's, it's very general. But I think you'd have to have very clearly established, like, guidelines for it. But it's, it's a, it's a worthy topic that I think maybe from, as a retreat opportunity, that might be a good one. Because I think every person who serves on, on, on different boards all over are hearing input and they're not sure what to do with, when they receive it. And so I, I really commend the committee for, for taking it on as a, as a question of like, how do we handle this? And it might be just something that we look at to establish some norms or protocols going forward.
So I have a couple of thoughts. I'll just start at the bottom because that seems easier. So as far as the students coming, 100% I'm on board for that. I always like students to come and present. So we're not talking about a, a student board member, right?
Well, that, I think is what we're looking for input on, I think, is, one of the ideas is to, you know, have like just a reporting, not a member, not an ex officio even, but just a report, like, you know, many boards around have some student reporting on a regular basis and it's the same person. Another alternative to that could be inviting particular clubs at, you know, all three levels really to, you know, maybe the club and their advisor to speak, to give a report on what they've been doing, to present, so it would have some variety and we get to see all different buildings. So we were really looking for input from the board about how that might be, but trying to make it as a regular thing, not like a, a special.
I'd, I'd go with a second method, which is to have groups come in or, you know, people make presentations about things that are going on in the school rather than a single representative that gives a report about whatever the topic may be. I might, like we had tonight, you know, a presentation by, by a student, a music student, but, you know, another time we could have a sci, you know, something about science or history or whatever the topic happens to be for the month or for the quarter or whatever happens to be.
So for me, I guess it depends what we're looking for. I mean, I love having student presentations, clubs come, but if we're looking to give students an opportunity of their voice heard by the board, then I like the idea of one person coming and tell us what's going on or tell us what students are thinking. So I guess it depends on what the purpose is. I mean, if it's just to, you know, if it's to kind of see what's going on, then yes, invite clubs and stuff. But if it's to kind of give them a little bit of a voice here or hear, or for us to hear their perspective.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I think that perhaps we could do a combination. If we have a set schedule and we know, we can have a representative or perhaps two representatives, because the students get busy. It's hard to have them come every other week to a meeting. But perhaps we could have them come, you know, if we had two representatives, they could, they can come, you know, maybe every other month. And on the in-between, we can invite club members, you know, clubs, do things like that. So we could actually have a combination. Because the students aren't going to be able to generate something every two weeks for us that's going to be meaningful. I think it's going to be very hard for them to do that. But perhaps if they know that in, you know, two months, they have to come up with what they're doing and what they'd like to see and plan, I think that that might be a better way to incorporate everyone. And then if the, the advisors for the clubs or the activity know in it well in advance, they could have something prepared for us so that it could be fun and the parents could come and see a presentation of some sort. So I think maybe we could do a combination.
I think that was well said. I'll leave it at that.
So, I guess, oh, sorry.
Do we get into any potential messiness of chain of command? I mean, Steve's point was a really good one I hadn't thought of yet before. But with students bringing their concerns directly to us as opposed to their principals?
It's not really concerns. I would say it's achievements. I mean, we were looking for achievements and the going on is how we presented it at the committee. When we talked about it, we weren't saying, oh, you know, I want a vending machine, like that.
Okay, so it's not, it's not like?
I mean, that's a, no, that's a school board thing. They have to take that to their, you know, they have to, not the school board, but that's their own, like, little club, whatever. Student body that they could try to have these things and they, they know how to get there. I, I think that they would just need to be educated about that. That they can't come and say, you know, the soccer team wants new jackets. That's not what the purpose of it is, you know? It's sort of just like, yay, the soccer team won today. That's what we want to hear.
But I think realistically, you know, if we open up and say we want to hear student voices, there are going to be times where it's not just the positives, but if there's some broader thing that students are concerned about, they might want to share that. And I just, I, I wouldn't want to discourage it, but, but being mindful of where the, the chains of command and ways to get changes happening.
Yeah, I think it'd almost be better, better positioning to figure how to create those opportunities in the system.
Separately.
They don't have to be at this. But I do think it would be good, and again, it could be a selfish perspective because I'm trying to learn the places, it's very tough in COVID. But I think having groups of students talk about what, you know, if we had, you know, some time to bring in, to really say, okay, on this date, we're going to bring in this club and we want to hear a little bit about what, what they're proud of, what their goals are. I think students are really wanting to talk about that and to feel what they like. So that's what we're really, I do think the students are feeling somewhat that school is happening to them, not just Ryan Beck students. I think just in general, young people feel that all of us are working really hard to them, not with them. So I think whatever opportunity we have to let them just be heard in a way that elevates their voice, I think everyone's struggling to find a, find their way to communicate outside of their very small little groups, so. Maybe we start with the clubs and see if there's any, see if anyone's even interested. We, they may not be, but I think it's worth putting an invite out just as a presentation.
All right. As far as the town hall, I mean, I think we're talking about three board members at most so that we don't have an official meeting. So do you have the date for the April?
Well, I was hoping it would be after a budget adoption, so, because that was my, my goal was to be, that'd be a kickoff of education of the key elements of it.
And I, I think it's a good idea to have board members there. So I guess when the date is set, maybe if we could just send out the email and see who's available to attend?
Yeah, I, I was thinking that it would be the 19th. I'm hoping the 19th is just a really good day because we'll have more kids in. So I think it'll be a good day. That's the tentative on that, but I think we'll, we'll have to have a little bit more sense of that after the meeting on the 9th. Maybe that'll, I can announce it on that Friday. I will put out the date because we'll know after the committee meeting.
Okay. And then up to, so the first item. So I think as far as having a stronger presence, I think that's a good idea. When you have kids in a certain building, you tend to, you know, just attend those events and maybe not the other ones. You know, it's something we've talked about in the past, like trying to get out to more events. I think that's always a good idea. I mean, it informs our work and it's important how to do that. I mean, it's about getting, so we know those events, right? If we don't have elementary kids, how do you know when there's an event? I'm not sure about the idea, the visits and tours. I mean, we do a tour of the building. I assume you were talking about like going in to school day. I don't know that that's our place to necessarily just like go in during the day. I mean, if it's, if a teacher is doing something where they're already inviting in parents, then I think that would be an opportunity for us to also probably go in on those dates. But just to kind of, where board members are going to come into the classroom, I don't think that is our place. So I would say not in that way, but when there's already these opportunities that we may not have a kid in a certain class, but they're having parents to come in to see something, that might be an opportunity if people are available to go in and witness that or concerts or?
I'll give just one example I think that would be interesting. And I think all of this would be done in coordination with the principals. It would be, you know, there are so many things to, to show. And I think it's very difficult because we're not in the school buildings. But I just happen to be in a classroom on the day that the training was occurring for setting up the live streaming. And I think just to see the amount of creativity that the teachers are putting into the approach to get on the inside, just from an education point of view, to educate ourselves on like what's going on. I mean, it's a totally different way. So for school, for so long, it's like you've all been in classrooms, everyone our whole life. That's one of those things that we've all know what it looks like. It looks very different now. And so I think we did do a tour when there were no students. It may not, not the full board, but I would love maybe if it's a committee just to show, there's so much to be proud of that, that is happening. And I think that it would be good to see it firsthand. That is really where the spirit of it is. It would not be going into a classroom just to check on the, that would not be. But I, I think there's just some things to celebrate and to showcase. And in the absence of public school events like concerts and all those elements, you don't get to see it on display. And that's where the spirit of, of this came from. Is that representing the committee discussion accurately?
Yeah, I feel like it would have been an invited thing. We wouldn't just say, hey, we're going to come in and observe you. Like that's not, it's not to put a teacher on alert that the board is coming to like evaluate them in some way.
That makes more sense.
Yeah, I think it was more, you know, they'd do something special.
There's a desire to, to show, this is what it's like, because it's so different. And I think that it just helps people feel known if we can say, you know, I see you, I, I get. I think for myself too, it's very difficult for me. You know, I have an office. I'm not in the, in the room. And any chance that somebody feels like I can see like just what is really happening, I think it, it goes a long way. That's really where.
I, I mean, I think that's a great idea then. I think, I understand that better. Then as far as the, the concerns, so we do have Board Policy, 1400 Public Concerns that talks about how the public makes their concerns and the process for that. And the spirit of that is, you know, we want to always foster good relationships between our parents, our community, and our staff. I think having a place where people can anonymously talk to board members and then those concerns are read in a public session, I think that goes against that. So I really would not like us to do that. I know we all struggle when people come to us and they have issues, they have concerns, they're frustrated and they tell you and they want you to help, and sometimes finding the best way to work through that. So I think if we want to talk about what we, what was said before, kind of, how do we make sure we're all on the same page? I mean, if we get a letter, we all get that letter, or if I get it, I tend to send it out to all of you. But, right, if someone pulls someone aside and shares their concerns, what space do we use to talk about that? I mean, I don't think it's like an anonymous space in being read in the minutes, but I, you know, I think there, we should figure out what the best way to do that would be.
I like the idea of a retreat topic. I think that makes a lot of sense. I think that makes a lot of sense.
I mean, that's more what it's about, about making sure we're all hearing the same information or getting the same.
The idea was not even necessarily read publicly, but just an internal report to the other board members. So all the board members have the same information.
I mean, I think that's a process thing and I think that makes sense to work out. We should all kind of have the same information. Why we couldn't add that to our retreat or add that to when we, you know, come up with our processes for the following year. I don't have anything, anybody else have anything for this committee? So next is performance monitoring.
Those are my notes as well. Actually, all the topics that we discussed in that meeting were discussed today. So Title IX, the live streaming and increasing in-person and the new stimulus package that's coming through. So there really was not much, we're not really seeking anything from the board. As we get information, we'll share it.
I just have a question. So the training I know that we do every year, we didn't do it this year. Are we talking about that to make sure we meet it this year because we still haven't or is it for next year?
There have been some revisions to Title IX and I just received even up-to-date. There's a lot of revisions in the practices of that. So that's for the whole district wide as well as the board-related. So we will be bringing through that committee new language to look at, to adjust it.
But not for us to complete this year, you don't think? I mean, last year we did it online, I think we did, the last two years we did it online? But it's new.
Yeah, it's an annual requirement.
But we didn't do it this year.
Diane, sorry, no idea what you're saying over here.
Sorry, I was just asking for sexual harassment training, if we were supposed to complete that this year, which I believe we did not do this year. Okay. I won't come on that.
But we will.
Okay, we will. So we're going to move on now to good news. Anyone want to share some good news?
I'd just like to say that I'm really happy that the live streaming has started. I know it took a lot of work to get to this point and has, as the parent of a high schooler, you know, talking about the mental health impact of having the three days off and the two days in class structured, there's a lot to be said for her having to get up in the morning and be on screen by eight o'clock. And it's somewhat small, but it's actually really big. So I wanted to extend a thanks to the teachers and to Albert. I think we're, I know that, I know we have more progress to be made, but I think this is a huge step and it's making a difference already, so. Thank you.
Any other good news?
I have one little thing. And I don't really call it good news, it's good news for the person, but not good news for the business office. But Liz Van Kern, who's been a longtime senior account clerk, our payroll clerk, been a member of and employee of the district for 35 years. She is retiring at the end of this month, so I just want to say kudos to her. And we will see her in June when we do have our retirement get-together, but I just want to acknowledge that and wish her good luck in her retirement.
I just want to say it's great to see our fall sport athletes out, the teams out and about and hearing the scores and everything. And I'm glad that we're able to stream the games for parents that are not able to attend. And I think it's also great news that our seniors who are in-person are back in school with their friends. I think that's great news. It has been a long time that they've seen them, so that's great news. Old business? Any old business?
One thing I just want to remind, we do have, we will have the BOSI's vote coming up. I'll be giving to the board. They presented a budget document, so I'll be scanning that to everyone in advance so you can see what it is, what the outlay is for those four areas. It is, they are having a decrease in what they're looking for, for the administrative portion of their budget this year.
For us, it's about $8,000 less than the year before. And that's mostly due to rental. The rentals went down.
That vote at the next meeting or is that?
Yes, I believe it's the next meeting, the 13th.
Do we have clarification with the voting for the BOSI's board? Is that, I've heard different things, that might be like a roll call vote? Do we have any clarification on how that works?
Diane is asking about the clarification about the BOSI's board member vote. I have not heard that, but I will do the research to make sure that we're fully prepared of how that's going to happen. As you all know, this is the first year, I believe, there's a contested election, multiple candidates for limited seats. So I'll make sure that we're fully prepared.
So it may be that each person has to make their own vote, not our combined vote, but you'll find out. And we have an opportunity now for public comment. None, any other? And we'll move to our action items. Would anyone like to remove anything from the consent agenda? Steve?
Can we remove 7.1.4?
Okay, we'll remove that, put it in the regular. Okay. Can I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following consent items as amended?
Simul.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, that passes. And then, so that would be, I'll cut at the end then. Can I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve as a final reading and adoption of board policy number 5633, gender-neutral, single occupancy bathrooms?
Simul.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the resignation of Paula DeMarco, teacher aide at Rhinebeck High School for the purpose of retirement, effective at the close of business on June 28, 2021.
Simul.
Second.
Any discussion? We wish Mrs. Marco well in her retirement. All those in favor? That motion passes. And motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Margaret DeVivo as full-time 1.0 FTE senior account clerk, 7.0 hours per diem with a 26-week probationary period effective April 5, 2021, at an annual salary at the rate of $48,600 pro-rated.
Simul.
Second.
All those in favor? And 7.5, can I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept the 2021 ExxonMobil Fuel Education Alliance grants in the amount of $500 for Rhinebeck High School for the maintenance and support in the area of math and/or science through the sponsorship of Mr. Richard Matthews and Rhinebeck Mobile?
Simul.
Second.
Any discussion? I just want to thank Rhinebeck Mobile for this grant. It's something they do for our schools every year, but this has obviously been a tough year and it could easily have been something they didn't do and I really appreciate that they're doing that again this year for our schools. All those in favor? That motion passes. And can I have a motion to move an executive session for a contract negotiation?
Simul.
Second.
All those in favor? Okay. We'll move into executive session.